All right, I've got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Before we get started, I know we have a couple of new audience members. I just want to go over a few ground rules. So please silence your cell phones and try to minimize any background noise. There's gonna be a time after each presentation where the planning commission members are gonna have discussion. And after we are done, I'll open the floor to questions and comments from the audience regarding each project. So please wait until I identify that time. If you want to be recognized, you can either use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen, or you can email Greg. Be sure to identify yourself, name and address if you do join in. That being said, we will move into the first agenda item. You know what, first let me get a roll call. I know Tim Ruth is not here tonight, so let me roll through some things here. Alex, you're here.
Here.
Andy?
Here.
John?
Here.
And Tony, you're here?
Yes.
Who else am I missing? I see Steve's here. All right, David Collingwood, Supervisor Collingwood is here?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else want to identify themselves for the record? Who do we have from Verus?
Hi folks, this Greg Davis is here from Verus. Also on the line, I believe are Ryan Hahn, Bob McCormick from Verus, and Adam Cetrullo from Bowler Engineering, our civil engineer.
Good evening.
All right, and from THP?
Dean Rittenhouse, THP.
I'm Bob Irik, I'm here. Dean, if he's not here, he will be.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, let's keep moving then. First item on the agenda is our planning commission reorganization. This is something we have to do at the first meeting of each year. The current lineup is Tim Ruth is our secretary, Alvin Solmer is the vice chairman, and I am the vice chairman. What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
This is John, I propose that we keep the same arrangement for 2022.
One clarification, Chris, you're the chairman.
But that's not what I said.
I thought I heard vice chairman.
No, you're the vice chairman.
That's what I thought. I just didn't want to be stepping forward.
Well, if I did say vice chairman, I apologize and thank you for correcting me. Can I get a second on John's, or do we want to have other nominees?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries, we're gonna stay the same as last year. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 14th. Everyone got a chance to look them over? Do we have any corrections or questions?
This is Alex, it looked good to me.
John, it looked good to me, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, can I get a second?
Andy, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so our first applicant of the evening is Verus Partners. I understand you want to give a presentation, so I will hand it over to whoever wants to take care of the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, this is Greg Davis again. I'm with the Saul Ewing Law Firm out of our Chester County office, and I represent Verus Partners tonight. Again, on the phone or on the Zoom call with us tonight from Verus are Ryan Hahn and Bob McCormick, and Adam Cetrullo, our civil engineer from Bowler Engineering. Verus, as you may know, has the former Drum construction site at Meeting House Road and Clymer Avenue under contract. It's about 18 acres, it's zoned PI, planned industrial, and Verus is proposing to develop about 185,000 square foot warehouse facility on the property. We have received Steve's February 3 review letter. We're happy to go through that tonight. We do not yet have a McMahon letter on traffic, so that'll have to wait. But before we get to Steve's letter and go through that, we thought we'd ask Adam, our civil engineer, to walk you through, you know, walk everybody through the plan and just give you an idea of what we're proposing, and then maybe we can get back into the guts of the letter. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I would suggest we do it that way, thank you.
Okay. And Greg, I don't know what sort of screen sharing needs to be done for Adam to talk?
Well, Adam, who's gonna present, Adam?
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Presentation button now.
Perfect.
At the bottom.
I'm sharing it now, can everyone see my screen? Shouldn't be an aerial here of the property rendering?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, perfect, sounds great. Thanks Greg, appreciate the intro. Let me just give some initial recap background of the proposal. As Greg has indicated, the property is located at 2925 Clymer Avenue, ultimately at the intersection of Clymer Avenue and West Meeting House Road. The site is approximately 18 acres, and is currently developed as a, let's call it, civil contractor services facility with existing access onto Clymer Avenue. Adjacent uses consist of residential, commercial, some I call it light industrial. The zoning is currently PI planned industrial. The proposal, ultimately, we're proposing to develop the lot within approximately 184,500 square foot warehouse. Ultimately, we're proposing 139 auto parking spaces along, let's call it, the eastern portion of the site, and ultimately approximately 45 loading docks along the western portion of the site here, adjacent to, let's call it, the quarry area, if you will. And ultimately along the northern portion, we're proposing 30 trailer spaces, and our accesses, we're proposing two, both along Meeting House Road, nothing along Clymer Avenue. Ultimately, just as a general description of the stormwater facilities, we're proposing three above-ground stormwater basins to treat ultimately rate, and our volume is treated through spray irrigation. So two of these stormwater basins, that being this basin, and this basin ultimately detained some water, which is subsequently sprayed throughout the property in a spray irrigation system. Site plan. In general, this is the site plan proposed. To provide more detail as far as what we are proposing with our development, that's in general, it's called the intro. And as Greg has indicated, we are in receipt of the win associates review letter. If it would be the pleasure of the board, I could certainly go through that through each comment. I do want to note, we really only have a few comments. We think we would appreciate getting everyone's input on, but if it's, I can certainly go through each one comment at a time, whatever would be the preference.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically the way we do it, and if you don't mind going that way. I mean, if it's a simple will comply, we don't need to comment. But I think there's a lot of things we're gonna, well, a handful of things we're gonna have some discussion about.
All right, perfect. Yeah, that sounds good to me. Ultimately, I do want to ultimately pitch it back to Greg for these first two comments initially.
Yeah, happy to take those, Adam, and they're fairly simple, right? The first two deal with the use, what actually, what use, category of use are we proposing? And we are proposing a warehouse use, which requires 138 parking spaces, and we're proposing 139, so it complies. To the extent that, you know, in the future, we were to propose something different than warehouse, and, you know, the parking requirements would change, we would have to come back to the township. But with this plan, we are in fact proposing a warehouse project. So that should address comments one and two.
Yeah, that takes care of your parking questions on comment two.
Yep.
Steve, do you have any input on that?
No, that's what we wanted to clarify, that there wasn't multiple uses proposed or a use that would impact the parking calculation.
Understood, yep.
What happens, you know, if you find out that this isn't gonna work as a warehouse, and you want to go with a use that needs more parking? What's the procedure for that? I mean, you have to go in front of zoning hearing if you don't change your parking? Is that how that works?
Absolutely. So the parking is, we would require, you know, 10 times more parking for, for example, a manufacturing use.
Right.
And so to the extent we couldn't fit all those parking spaces on the site, as is, we would absolutely have to go to the zoning hearing board. So, but your staff would be involved all along the way. I mean, we would propose a different use than the one we're getting, you know, approved now. We would have to come back through the township to do that.
Okay. And Greg, I guess I'd add a note on that. If we did go to a different use, this plan with the existing paved areas could accommodate an alternative use. For instance, if you had a manufacturing use that came here, the trailer parking towards the north end of the building could be converted to auto parking to comply with that requirement. You know, certainly a different use wouldn't have the same need for the trailer parking. Understood.
And if I might just add one more thing. Chris, I think, you know, that would probably fall into the category, if this plan made it all the way through and had a final approval, we've done things with sort of revised final approvals or amended final plans. It would probably fall into that category if they were able to keep the extents of impervious and the extents of disturbance pretty much the same, just reconfigured the site. Probably be that type of process, but certainly back to the planning commission and the board.
Yeah, thank you. All right, move on.
Perfect, so I'll take, jumping on to the next comment here, comment number three. And I do want to share another plan, if you just give me a brief moment. All right, can everyone see this landscape plan here?
Yes.
Perfect. So I do want to go through this comment specifically, so I'll read it here. Ultimately indicating that section 1704 of the zoning ordinance requires establishment of landscape buffer yards for non-residential uses but residential use property. Accordingly, a type 1 25-foot wide buffer yard is proposed along, that would be these properties here. These are residential properties between both the building and Meeting House Road. And I do want to note that we're complying with required plantings between this buffer yard as a result of the adjacent use, as being obviously a commercial, you know, industrial use, and the residential use. The ordinance indicates ultimately that type 1 buffer, and we're proposing, I'd suggest that exact buffer along, just to clarify. These are the properties in question. And if you can follow my cursor here, ultimately along this property boundary here, here, and here, it's called the side here, and these two legs ultimately we're proposing that buffer. The comment that the township engineers indicated is ultimately to, you know, as an opinion to determine if that buffer is satisfactory. I just want to indicate a comment of mine that ultimately we are proposing landscape plantings in accordance with buffer requirements.
All right, so you're not trying to look for some relief on the planting requirements? You're gonna do what's required of you?
That's correct. I do want to note, we're asking for other relief, not associated with this buffer.
The residential, is that what we're talking about, the residential buffering?
That's correct. We're not asking for any relief associated with that residential buffer.
Right. Steve, are you satisfied with that? I mean, I want to see these people as protected as much as possible, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, and as much as they have met the ordinance requirements, so.
Right.
I just put the comment in so we could, you know, discuss it and understand what's proposed. It is a mix of shrubs and evergreens and canopy trees, barely dense planting.
Is there a specific definition for a landscape buffer?
Yes.
Okay.
There's specific planting types that have to go in, so many plants per foot of boundary, more or less.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from planning commission? All right. Yeah, I mean, as long as we're meeting the requirement and you're satisfied with it, Stephen, we're ready to move forward to number four here.
Perfect. So ultimately, number four is ultimately will comply on our end. I'll just indicate the correct distance of that required front yard setback along Clymer Avenue. I want to point out that the required building setback is 50 feet. We mistakenly shown it as a side yard, and our building is approximately 160 feet off of that property line. So ultimately, I think it's just a simple will comply on our end, and won't negatively impact any sort of revisions in that regard. If everyone's satisfied with that, I'd like to move on to number five. There's several pieces, so I'll go through them one at a time here. Comment 5A, sorry.
No, go ahead, no, sir.
Okay, perfect. So comment 5A is ultimately a will comply, will work with your township engineer here to provide an subsequent analysis as was recommended based on historical aerial data to further delineate any sort of woods that may be present, and ultimately, you know, provide that to the township engineer's satisfaction.
Good.
Perfect. Ultimately, 5B, in a similar vein of regard, we're required to provide or indicate slopes in excess of 12% on the site in a very similar manner, that's a will comply. We will provide that analysis and ultimately confirming what's 12% and above, and ultimately working with the township engineer to come to agreement on what's manmade versus what's not. There's obviously existing development on this site, so as long as, you know, we can work with your township engineer to provide that to his satisfaction, that's a will comply.
Yeah, and I think it's pretty obvious what's manmade and what's not out there.
Perfect. Ultimately, the next comment here, 5C, in regards to wetlands, is will comply. I believe Ryan has an update in that regard.
Yeah, we have a wetlands delineation report that we'll be submitting.
You have one completed already?
We have one completed, and we'll submit that with our response.
Perfect. Ultimately, just acknowledging the last, you know, let's call it paragraph of this comment. Once we address these to the satisfaction of the township, then the township engineer will obviously subsequently revise our site capacity calculations accordingly.
Okay.
Next comment here, comment six, in regards to the project narrative and the building height. I do want to pitch it to Ryan here as well.
Yes, this is another will comply item, but we'll provide an architectural cross-section of the building showing the structural steel. This is gonna be designed as a gabled roof, so you'll see that the stormwater design shows drainage to both sides of the building. So you're gonna have a 32-foot interior clear height inside the first column line, and then it's going to be the average elevation between the eaves and the top of that ridge line, but we'll provide a document that shows how that compliance will be achieved.
So you're gonna stay under the 35 feet?
Well, under the 35 feet is defined in the ordinance.
Right.
Correct.
It's a little tricky, there's a specific way of what's included in the building heights.
I have read five building height definitions, and everybody adds their own little spice to it, so.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for the board that there could be parts of the building that are higher than 35 feet, but it still meets the definition of 35.
Okay. All right.
Perfect. Just moving on to the next comment here, comment seven is actually in regards to our waiver requests. I would ask if everyone would be amenable to go through the rest of the comments and then come back to this, because ultimately, some of the subsequent comments do refer to some of the waivers here.
All right, yes, fine.
Perfect. Next comment here regarding the traffic impact study. The only thing I'm gonna state is we acknowledge there's comments here from your township engineer. Ultimately, we're not in receipt of any review letter from McMahon, so once we're in receipt of those, you know, we can subsequently respond accordingly.
All right, so you have not received your traffic study, all right. Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah, to be clear, we have a traffic study, we just don't have any comments on it from.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Consultant.
And when was your traffic study done?
That's a good question. Dean, April 5, 2021.
What, where were we in the COVID scene at that point? Because I know traffic at one point during the COVID restriction was really restricted, it was way down. I want to make sure that your study wasn't done during one of those times.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Ultimately, I think we reconnect with our traffic consultant, TPD, wasn't able to be on. I hear your concern that ultimately you want to ensure that, you know, the traffic study is done based on what we would consider, you know, accurate numbers, not impacted by COVID-related traffic.
Yeah, that's a big one. All right, go ahead.
So next comment here, comment nine, doing acknowledge that we have requested some waivers from some improvements along Clymer and Meeting House Road. Ultimately, there's just some statements in here regarding to, you know, the additional traffic proposed as part of this development. I think, once we get any sort of additional comments from McMahon, I think we can certainly look further at these and, you know, study those at that time.
All right, I know that Steve had made some suggestions on Clymer. Where was that?
Yeah, I think he noted.
Steve, you know?
There's a suggestion to relocate the culvert along the edge of Clymer.
Right.
Yeah, what we were, what I was going for was, there's no access to Clymer Ave, and trips on Clymer were expected to be minimal as most of the traffic would go out, Meeting House to State Road. So we were suggesting essentially drainage improvements along Clymer Ave, and then concentrate the improvements on Meeting House Road out to the intersection.
Yeah, I believe there's two, I think there's actually three culverts crossing that road. Pulp another plan, I might look at them closer.
I think there's three.
Yeah, just so I was aware, those culverts will be approximately here, here, and here. But ultimately, in regards to that comment, I'm gonna suggest we'd prefer to see any sort of, you know, combine any sort of, you know, improvements that may be suggested by your traffic consultant. Take a look at those collectively.
Good.
So that's comment nine, just moving on here. Comment 10 is ultimately, will comply. Just be clear, our bulk chart was prepared contemplating, ultimately not including that right-of-way area. So symbol will comply, suggests there's no real change to our bulk chart in that regard. Moving on to comment 11, several pieces to that, so I can certainly go through them. Comment 11A regarding our waiver request for 3-1 slopes and the required 4-1 for the basin, simply requesting additional slope stability calculations. That's something we'd certainly provide to further support that waiver requirement.
What are the, Steve, what are the reasons for limiting that slope?
That's what we agreed to the last time that we redid the subdivision ordinance.
I mean, is it a safety issue?
3-1 is considered a mowable slope, but it is fairly steep. And I think, I think our thought process was more in residential developments, that we wanted to minimize the steeper slopes, that could be a problem. And we went to the 4-1, but there are some provisions in the ordinance that allows for the 3-1 slope if you provide the stabilization information. And I think, I can't remember, did we talk about whether these basins are fenced or not?
Yeah, we didn't discuss it, but the basins are fenced.
Yeah, so that's another thing to take into consideration, that they are protected by fence.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Just moving on here to comment 11B, regarding the retaining walls and providing designs. I'd say that certainly will comply, will provide a, let's call it, general detail on our land development plans with the understanding that we'll follow up with fully designed engineered doc drawings. The only comment I want to make is that, you know, the intent on our end would be to submit those after land development approval prior to building permit issuance, just to limit the, what's called, requirement to redesign in the event, you know, wall, you know, pipe potentially changes throughout the land development design.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as you include the notes on the plans that the engineered drawings are required for building permits.
Perfect. Comment 11C, so ultimately it will comply. You know, we'll work with the township engineer here to provide any additional grading detailing to ensure there's no impact off property with any grade we're proposing. And ultimately, 11D is another will comply. We'll prepare that cut field calculations and submit them here to the township, to the satisfaction of the township engineer with a subsequent submission. Comment 12 here, several pieces to this as well, so I'll go through them.
Steve, Adam, any way to summarize those? I don't know what, I mean, if the planning commission wants to hear about them one at a time, we'll go through them one at a time, but we'll take your lead on that.
No, there's no need to do these one at a time.
Yeah.
I'm just looking through them to see if there's anything more important than others.
God bless, Steve, thank you.
Sure. So ultimately, yeah, just summarizing the comments within 12, it's in relation to the stormwater report. Ultimately, they are all will comply, we will prepare the, any additional calculations that's requested. I do acknowledge comment, it's 12C in regards to apparently some concerns with some downstream properties. Ultimately, I'm gonna suggest we comply with these remaining comments. We can provide that study to indicate that there's no negative impacts as a result of our project.
And then I just had two questions as a follow-up, just.
Sure.
On 12B, was there a reason there was no infiltration testing done on the north end of the site?
We, I can speak to that, Adam. When we originally did our due diligence, we confined our infiltrations testing just to the north end of the site. And after Bowlers got into the heavy engineering, we did a subsequent report. So looking at the submittal, we only had that first round of infiltration testing included. So there is an amendment to that report that includes infiltration testing on the south end of the site.
Okay. I was just curious if it was discounted for some other reason that, you know, like there's a shallow limiting zone, so you just didn't do testing up there. And then 12C, I just want to, you know, point that out for the planning commission's benefit that we did have, I believe Greg copied you on the comments from Rock Hill Mini Storage Owners. It's a flooding occurrence that I think we've been aware of over the years on their property. And that's the basis of that comment, so I could deal with their engineer more on that. I think they may, with some of the water volume and that spray irrigation system, that might work to the benefit of easing that, this issue, because it will take some of the volume away from the initial discharge off of the site. work to the benefit of, of easing that, this issue, because it will take some of the volume away from the initial discharge off of the site. So, we could try to clarify that and see if it, it will show a benefit. Those were the only items out of there that I wanted to point out.
Alright, so we can go on to 13?
Perfect. I'll try and take my hint from Greg here, if, uh, we want to be a bit more brief. Ultimately, um, 13, uh, majority will comply. I know if you want to be a bit more brief by doing acknowledge that some of them are in relation to some of the waivers we're requesting that we'll get to towards the end here. Ultimately, 13A, and we can take a look at when we look at that, those waiver requests, ultimately, we're requesting a waiver of providing 35% shading of the parking lot. The comment is potentially, um, you know, in conjunction with that waiver request, potentially shade other areas of the parking lot. I have no objection to, you know, potentially providing that subsequent, uh, analysis. Um, we can get further in that when we get to waivers. Uh, B is simply will comply, um, will indicate, you know, what's required there. Uh, C is ultimately another will comply, um, so I don't think we need to discuss anything further there. That's what I had in relation to 13. If anyone has any other comments on that?
I have none.
Perfect. Uh, next comment here, 14, I'll probably pitch it to Ryan briefly.
I'll speak to that a little bit. I mean, uh, generally, this is a will comply. We will, uh, close the existing onsite domestic water well in accordance with Health Department and PADEP regulations. Uh, there is an onsite septic system. Um, and I'll back up for a second as part of our due diligence and looking to purchase this property, we did a phase one environmental assessment uh, that identified a handful of areas of concern on the site, and then we did a subsequent phase two investigation, uh, which will provide to the township and our, and our response here showing the closure of those areas of concern that were identified. Um, but the big items there, we delineated the limits of that septic leach field and the septic tank. Um, so where that resides, and Adam, I don't know if you have an existing condition map you can pull up there.
I do, give me a moment.
But I guess while Adam's pulling that up, is this, there's a, uh, I think everybody's familiar, this is the former site of Drum Construction, a heavy civil operation. Uh, there's one main building on that property that sits basically in the center of where we're showing our truck court. And just to the south of that building, we delineated the limits of that septic leach field. Um, performed sampling on that, yes, exactly. And then that will be removed as part of the demolition work, uh, with our development. The good news is that this all resides underneath new paving for the building, so this will be capped off at completion. Uh, the water well that was identified, that also will be abandoned and, and properly closed, that sits immediately adjacent to that building also, kind of underneath that truck court area. And then the other activity that occurred on the site is there was, uh, just to the south of that building, there was some buried debris encountered, uh, so they just went through a three-month process of removing, there were some drums and a couple, I guess, crushed sheet metal vehicles that were moved. Um, and then the soil was sampled around that and any, anything that was impacted was disposed of. But bottom line is, we'll provide a summary of that, that phase two report indicating the closure of those issues.
Excuse me, Ryan, this is Alex. Did that go through any kind of an act two voluntary closure, or was that just a due diligence exercise?
It was, it was a voluntary exercise, um, for our investment in the property to have a clean phase two report. Uh, we did go through and, um, sample the, uh, the well, um, and ran that against screening limits, uh, removed a small impact, but no, there was no, um, this didn't go through an act two program.
Thank you.
And then I'll take, um, there is a question on, uh, item 15. I don't know that there is a specific comment except for asking us to confirm. Uh, the lighting will be operated dust till dawn. We'd anticipate that as part of the site's security, but, uh, we will comply with any light pollution requirements, um, and happy to respond to any additional comments related to that.
On the dust till dawn, uh, all, all the lighting will be on overnight, or just, will it be reduced at all, selected lights on overnight?
Um, we would anticipate all the lights being on just in, in terms of keeping that around the perimeter of the building. And we're open to any, you know, further comments regarding light, uh, cutoff lenses, um, ability to, and, you know, we're not providing for any spillover on the property line. But it is a security concern.
I believe you're proposing cutoff fixtures now, and, you know, what we've done in the past is if we've had a problem after the fact that we've asked, uh, people to put shields on the lights on, you know, a particular side, that might be at issue.
Understood.
What do you have for lighting at the entrances?
Uh, I don't believe we have anything proposed there right now. Is that correct, Adam?
No, there's a, there's a light fixture. I thought at the, like, return radius on.
We have a pole there?
Yeah, we have poles. Ultimately, here's our entrances, uh, we have two poles, southern entrance, two poles at the northern entrance. Ultimately, I'll note that if you can look at the, the, uh, light levels at the property line, um, they are zero ultimately. Obviously, the, the entrance, they're a little brighter to light that entrance here. Here.
So you, you have two at each entrance? Is that, you have two poles?
That's correct.
Alright, why don't you move on?
Uh, number 16, I believe this is, uh, it's requesting a, a comment from the township, but we were proposing the fee in lieu of recreation land dedication.
I assume the planning commission didn't, wasn't looking for a baseball field out here?
Well, we can have discussion about that, but maybe a basketball court, you got a lot of them, Ken.
Might be a skate park, but I don't know about that.
Yeah, I, if, if you're looking for comment on that, I have no problem with fee in lieu on that one.
This is Alex, nor do I.
Andy, same.
And on Tim's behalf, I'll add that you wouldn't want to see it for any reason anyhow, so.
Right.
Alright, moving on.
Okay, perfect. I can take, uh, the comments from here. Uh, the majority of these tend to be, it's called will comply, um, or just ultimately additional approvals. We'll need 17. Acknowledging we need approval here from the, um, municipal authority, and we'd like to note, we've already submitted to them and are waiting any sort of comments in that regard. 18, uh, is indicated if this appears, the township had forwarded our submission here to the fire company, uh, if there's any additional comments in that regard, once they're issued, um, we'll certainly address them as they come in, and ultimately acknowledging we'll, you know, will comply regarding providing any additional truck maneuvering, um, templates required. 19.
I, I'll just comment that Chief Fagley did, uh, or, uh, Fire Marshal Fagley did reach out to me and asked that we put a public hydrant at the north entrance, which we agreed to as part of our water line extension to the property. Sorry, Adam, go ahead.
No, no, no problem. Um, so 19, um, as I know, we've submitted for our, it's called flow approvals through the borough authority, acknowledging we obviously need our approval through DEP, um, and we're working through that process, uh, once we get our approvals here, with the flow through the borough and township. Uh, so ultimately, that's a will comply item. 20 is another will comply item, just as an update, we did, uh, submit, um, last month, uh, for MPDS. Ultimately, we're under technical, or I apologize, administrative review, um, with our MPDS submission, uh, with the county. So ultimately, we'll comply, um, we'll forward any sort of approvals or comments once we're in receipt. 21 is another will comply, um, we'll provide any sort of existing mine mutation or propose any mine mutation required. 22, I think is a more, uh, obviously towards final approval, but is obviously will comply, um, in regards to, you know, any sort of developer agreements required. And ultimately, as we get towards, um, more towards, uh, any additional comments, we'll subsequently prepare any sort of opinion probable cost as required. 23, I do acknowledge we're in receipt of the, uh, review letter prepared by Win Associates dated the 4th. Um, ultimately, all those, in my opinion, will comply. We tend to, um, address those when we respond to these comments accordingly. Um, unless anyone wants to go through them, um, it's my opinion that they're all generally will comply drafting engineering related.
No need to go through that.
Perfect. Uh, last comment here, 24, uh, just acknowledging if there's any additional comments, obviously, we acknowledge that upon any subsequent submissions.
Alright, so you want to go back and look at your waiver requests?
Yes. So just directing everyone's attention, I believe it was. On the comment here. Comment seven, uh, as part of our initial submission package, we had submitted a waiver request letter. Um, we'll just kind of go through them and ultimately, um, just to be clear, we're not asking for, you know, given where we're at in the project, we're not really requesting any sort of, um, you know, recommendation, uh, we're just asking for your thoughts on them at this point. In, in the event we need to revise and subsequently come back. So ultimately, um, comment 7A is our first waiver request, uh, requesting a waiver in regards to the preliminary, final land, preliminary and final land development process. We're intending to submit one preliminary slash final, uh, set for that subsequent preliminary, final combined approval.
So, I, I've had discussion with Steve about this, and this, we, we commonly do this, but don't typically require the waiver request. Is, is, Steve, is there any reason why we shouldn't do this? I mean, we, we're certainly not going to make any recommendations tonight, but, uh, to combine preliminary finals, pretty common.
Right, and I think, you know, but as you just referenced, as, as a policy, we really haven't committed to a, to a waiver to any one of that. It's more or less been, if the plan gets to a point, if, if they could clean up the plan and, and move the plan forward to a point that you're comfortable with issuing, uh, a recommendation for preliminary plan approv, preliminary final plan approval, planning commission has been open to doing that in the past.
Right.
Alright, so just be clear, maybe more.
My comment on that is I, I, I'm fine with it. It's not like you're trying to rush this process through, which I, I think was the initial reaction when you first see this, because we've ne, we've never been asked for this before, it just happens. Now, any other comments from the planning commission on this one?
John, I have none. Alex, I have none.
Andy, none.
Alright, you can move on to B.
Okay, perfect, but just to clarify, are you looking for us to just remove that at this point, or, um?
You know what, you might as well, because we, we don't require it, so.
Perfect, yeah. Ultimately, just having an overabundance of caution, um, it's part of the, the ordinance. Um, 7B, our second waiver request for topographic information in the 100 feet of the boundary to, as is required to be provided. Ultimately, you know, I suggest, uh, the improvements we're proposing, um, we're providing any sort of survey necessary, um, to provide those, ultimately detail and design those improvements. And if there's anything additional that maybe the township engineer might request in terms of aerials or anything like that, we can certainly provide. But ultimately, we're requesting the waiver to provide the survey within 100 feet.
Alright, Steve, I'm going to defer to you again.
Yeah, fine. Um, yeah, I'm not overly concerned with, with this item. They have, they have information past 100 feet in, in areas, you know, say, from the building out to, Meeting House Road, that, that whole area is, has been included on our plan. Uh, I, I think it'll work itself out, you know, as was just suggested, where there's additional information required, it will be addressed in, in the comments that we provided, and, and they'll give us the additional information. To the, you have Climber to the, uh, to the south, to the west of the property is the old, the old pits from the quarry. There's, there's not much there, and, and you have a little bit of a creek on the, uh, north side before you get into Rock Hill Mini, and they have the creek shown on the plan, so. Uh, I think it could be done, just addressing the comments where needed.
This is Alex. I'm just wondering, could they provide, like, uh, the LiDAR data for that, just to have some sense of what the topo looks like without actually requiring a full-blown survey?
Certainly they could.
Yeah, we can certainly provide LiDAR, um, to the satisfaction of the township.
Would that be sufficient to eliminate the need for a waiver then, Steve?
Probably. I think it would be adequate.
Okay, perfect. So confirm we'll provide LiDAR, um, to 100 feet beyond the property boundary and subsequently, uh, revise our waiver request to remove this one.
You, you want to explain that whole process of one of you engineers, Alex or Steve?
Oh, the LiDAR?
Yeah.
LiDAR is like, uh, you know, you can almost think of it as USGS mapping, but it's actually flown information and it's, it's very accurate for what it is. We, we use it all the time. Uh, it's state, you know, state available information.
And it's down to two-foot contours, so it gives you a pretty good sense of what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you for the tutorial. Alright, so if we can, if we can get that information, you can eliminate the, the waiver request, is that how I'm hearing this?
Yes.
And, uh, are you guys alright with that? From Barry, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, we're good with that.
So you provide that LiDAR and we can eliminate the waiver request? Okay. Moving forward.
Perfect. Uh, next, uh, waiver request here is in regard to, uh, cuts and fills, uh, salary requires cuts and fills, prohibited cuts and fills beyond, you know, four vertical feet. I'm suggesting we're requesting this waiver ultimately, with the need to balance the site, we're going to require cuts and fills exceeding that four vertical feet. Yeah, I believe there's a subsequent comment that's suggesting providing additional cut fill calculations to further support that, that's something we can certainly provide.
So if you don't get the, the cut and fill you want, is that going to make the building too high at some point?
Well, ultimately, the, the, it would raise the finished floor of the building, um, or lower potentially, depending on where we're at. And ultimately, the building height though is in respect to, and, you know, I mean, I need to take one more look at the code when it regards to the general grade around it, which will raise with the building finished floor as well. So, in a sense, it won't raise the, the height according to the definition.
It's relative to the average finished grade at the front of the building.
And, and from my point of view, Chris, all I'm looking at is, if they're going to do extensive grading on the site, we want to know that they're essentially going to balance the grading on the site, that we don't, we don't do extensive grading on the site and they still need to bring in 100,000 yards of fill, or they need to ship out 100,000 yards of fill because they did this extra grade.
Adam and I will be.
I think that's your goal, right?
Yeah, Adam and I will be having a conversation if that happens.
You won't see me with Ryan again if that happens. Yeah, that's, that's showing the intent to balance the site, which is the ultimate, uh, reason behind why we're, you know, pro, proposing cuts beyond. proposing cuts beyond that four vertical feet. We don't want to be in a position where we're, say, importing a hundred thousand cubic yards or exporting a hundred thousand cubic yards. It's very cost prohibitive.
Adam, do you know off the top of your head how much lower you're cutting that first floor from what the natural high point of that property is?
I don't want to cough my head, but I can pull up the grading plan. Our finished floor currently is set at three ninety-eight, and the high point, if I can find a grade here, contour.
I think you're about four oh five.
Five, there you go. So in that sense, we're cutting, you know, what is it, six feet approximately?
Right, so if anything, that sort of helps lower the building compared to the surrounding grade to at least six feet in the middle of the site.
And you're all right with this waiver, Steve?
Well, I want to see the cut-fill numbers first.
Right.
Assuming it's generally balanced, I wouldn't have an objection to it.
Okay. All right, let's move on to D.
Perfect. Next waiver is D here in regarding to curving along climber road frontage. Ultimately, we're sounding, your sound requires curving along the road frontage of Climber Avenue and obviously Meeting House Road, but we're requesting it separately, just in an overabundance of caution.
I was, if I could have cut you off, sorry, Adam, but I was going to say, both of these items relate to road improvements. Steve has made a recommendation for improvements required. We're going to see a letter from McMahon. I think we have to agree to what the improvements are and then go back and look at whether these waivers are required at the end. Would you agree with that? I don't know if there's any value in discussing these right now.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, it's not like you're looking for approval this evening, so let's see what shakes out.
The one thing I would comment with curbing sidewalk is the, the Rock Hill Storage had put the curving in coming down from their site. So I think it might make, might make sense to extend that back down the rest that way. Obviously, there'd be a gap where the private residences are, but ultimately, I could see the curbing getting put in there.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Uh, yeah, Tony, go ahead.
On the truck plan, and I know what Alex is saying about continuing the curving, but those three residents in there, that road is only seventeen feet. And a concern that I would have, and on the truck plan C nine oh three, I don't know if Adam can put that up, but it shows two trucks passing one another and an ultimate right-of-way of thirty-two feet. And the concern is, is that when the truck driver comes down and misses the first entrance and goes to the second entrance, I mean, it's like a bottleneck there, and it looks like, I was trying to follow the curving the way it is, or from this drawing on how it is, and I was going to ask Adam for some clarification on it. But, you know, the concern is what happens when the driver misses the first entrance, goes down to the second entrance, and then now it's tight on Climber Avenue, I don't know for sure, but I think it's about twenty-three feet. And I don't know how, I saw how he's tying in, it looks like he's tying into the curving at Contractor Services, but I don't understand how you think it's going to work at seventeen feet, that's all.
Tony, that was one of the comments that I brought up, and that we asked the traffic consultant to further review, is that, you know, the two-way truck traffic on the full length of Climber Road, not just, you know, at this entrance. And that there would, you know, we were suggesting that the full length of Meeting House Road needs to be widened, at least on, on one side of the street to accommodate that, which might include, you know, can include in front of the residences, at least within the right-of-way that we have, the legal right-of-way.
Right, because, I mean, I don't want to backtrack a little bit, but I heard, you know, when I saw the lighting plan, and Adam talked about that, there's a single light at each entrance, but there was never anything talked about if there's any signage. And if a tractor trailer perhaps comes down, he misses the entrance, doesn't know where the other entrance is, and now he's coming down to Meeting House Road and doesn't know, I mean, I'm sorry, Climber Avenue, doesn't know to make a left or a right, but he's looking for somewhere to turn around, and that, there seems to be some confusion there. That's all I'm saying.
Is there, is there any signage proposed, or is that, are we too preliminary for that?
The signage we have proposed currently is in regards to the stop signs proposed at the frontage. I think what you're referring to is probably more traffic control signage in relation to, please shout if I'm misrepresenting, but it sounds like, you know, what might be suggested is some potential traffic control signage in relation to, you know, like a no trucks beyond, you know, this driveway, something along those lines. Or all trucks turned at this driveway potentially.
A business identification sign.
Right, that's what I was thinking, more like a, you know, your kind of sign. Yeah, we don't, we don't have it shown on the plan right now, but our intent was to put in a small monument at each entrance. I mean, for our benefit as well, so that people can identify the driveway.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be further investigated. I think Tony brings up a good point, you know, you don't want trucks going past there down on the climber.
Yeah, just to note that it's probably on this type of plan worthwhile to at least schematically know what that signage might be. In general, on these land development plans, we don't get into detail on the, you know, advertising and monument signs, because that's a whole separate zoning permit that they have to get for that. And we don't want to be in a position where, you know, we showed a location on the plan and now we're stuck with something that doesn't meet the zoning later. But I think for a schematic purposes, it would be beneficial here.
Okay, yeah, I'd agree.
All right. Mr. Chairman, real, can I ask a quick question too? Adam, would that sign be a lit sign? Would that be lighted?
I think that's also a more question I might pitch to Ryan in regards to his operations.
Yes, that would be.
And that sign would be lit twenty-four seven, is that real good?
Hopefully not during the day. We'd run it off one of the poles, so it would turn off with the exterior lighting. So dust to dawn as well.
Just for clarity, Ryan, do you mean an internally lit sign or a monument sign that has a light on it?
I'm picturing a, basically a small floodlight that goes against the sign, but that's not, that's not a critical component.
Okay, I think in general, the township would prefer that type of sign than an internally lit commercial sign, but keep in mind, the floodlight has to be a full cutoff fixture, so you can't have it on the ground pointing up at your sign.
Okay. It might be like an eyebrow-type fixture. You follow me?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
All right, so, I forget where we are. Where are we on D? Any more discussion on this one? So we're going to wait for traffic studies and whatnot to revisit the, all the improvements?
Yeah, so that'd be D and E.
Right.
Perfect. Moving on to the next waiver here, F, and we discussed it down below, but ultimately, we're requesting that waiver from the four-to-one side slopes for a three-to-one. And, you know, we're certainly more than happy to provide any sort of additional slope analysis to further support that.
And this was the basin slopes?
That's correct.
Right.
Primarily the basin slopes.
Right. All right. So G?
So G is in regards to the stall size. Ultimately, we're proposing nine-by-eighteens. Ultimately, that's typically what, you know, I've seen in these facilities. I do want to note that, you know, acknowledge that if there's a public component, you might want your stalls to be larger ultimately. And Ryan could probably speak this more, but the intent is that this is a private facility here.
Yeah, Steve, I think it's going to be, not only is it going to be private, but there's going to be very little turnover. It's not like it's a retail operation. Folks are going to come in, park, and then they're not going to leave until their shift is over. And so, you know, door dinging and those sorts of things is, you know, the risk of that is pretty minimal, and they're all our folks, no real invitees. But that was the thinking, and it's worked out for the Verus folks in the past, and ultimately, you know, it creates less impervious, obviously.
No, I understand your point of view. I think from the township's point of view, it's not an item that they've waived in the past. And I don't know that ultimately, the board will be willing to waive this.
Uh, yeah, I agree with Steve's thinking there. I know that they have looked at the largest type of vehicle and used that for their ultimate consideration in parking, parking space sizes. So you're, I mean, you're pretty close to your impervious surface maximum now, right? We're at fifty-eight percent?
Yeah, correct, we're at fifty-eight percent.
So by enlarging, going back to the ordinance limits, is that going to blow you out over the sixty?
Yeah, ultimately, I'd have to take a, sorry, I think my camera has an issue here. Ultimately, I'd have to take a look at it, but we're at fifty-eight percent. I'm going to suggest if we go to that larger, we might potentially be at that sixty percent or more.
Right. Well, I think you're going to have difficulty in space, in the size reduction with the board of supervisors.
This is Alex. I can say from personal experience that I find the nine to be very tight, but just my two cents.
Yeah, so you might want to rethink how you want to do things, because I honestly don't think it's going to get passed.
Okay, we'll have to go back to the drawing board on that.
All right, well, let's move forward.
Yep.
All right, so the next waiver is in regards to the width of the entrance at your driveways, or at our proposed driveways. Ultimately, we're requesting additional width, your maximum width is thirty feet. To be clear, we're proposing at the, just trying to pull the correct numbers off here. So we're proposing some a hundred sixty-four feet and a two-hundred-twenty feet at our curb cuts, and to be clear, that's a result of these curb returns and to, you know, adequately maneuver trucks. So ultimately, we're requesting a waiver of your thirty-foot and ultimately fifty-four-foot requirement at the pavement to facilitate these truck maneuvers.
What's your thoughts on that, Steve?
Well, they've certainly shown that they need it, the width. I don't want to say that the numbers in the ordinance are arbitrary, but they're, they're sort of set up for a run-of-the-mill driveway, not what this facility is.
Right.
So I think it would be counterproductive to make them meet the ordinance and then have an issue with trucks being able to pull in and out of the facility.
What other facilities do we have that would have this type of truck traffic? Or any kind of truck traffic is going to require that type of, of an opening?
Well, that Teva has a pretty big entrance.
Right.
Off of Cat Hill Road. I'm thinking North American Drager, but it's a little bit different there because Quarry Road itself is much larger than Meeting House Road. Part of this is driven by what, the size of Meeting House Road.
Right.
So that limits the, say, the swing of the truck
Sure.
back onto Meeting House Road. Well, I guess you could also look at Fresco.
Right, yep.
The ultimate width of a Fresco entrance is quite large.
Yeah. So we've not had an issue with waiving this in the past for this type of activity?
Not, I would say not when it's shown to be justified like this is.
Right.
Those widths are really just so you don't have large paved areas out to the street, that you have an uncontrolled access out into the street, that's not the circumstance here.
Right. Any other thoughts? All right. Well, why don't we move forward to I?
All right, so the next waiver request is ultimately in regards to, anyone's going to have to apologize, guys, seeing me having an issue with my video here hopefully comes back on shortly. Ultimately, we're requesting a waiver from the required requirement to provide a four-foot high berm with a five-foot high fence, proposing to propose a six-foot high fence in lieu of that along the residential properties. Ultimately, I do want to note, we're complying with the zoning requirements to provide the buffer, the tree buffer. Ultimately, this is in relation to the grade difference we have along this property. We're, we're obviously fully intending to provide the buffer screening in regards to the trees as the zoning requires. There's this, now, let's see if I can pull up the grading plan to further describe it. You can see due to ultimately, you know, balancing the site and, you know, cut-fill, we're in a situation where basically grading up to the property line should provide a, a berm would subsequently require us to ultimately further grade in those areas, potentially provide walls to provide that berm.
Could you get a berm, like, limited to be up closer to where the houses are? You know, along, along the, you know, between the parking area and your, and your property line to the rear of those three houses?
You're suggesting these areas here?
Yeah. And that would be where it would have the most impact for those properties anyway.
Yeah, that's certainly a good point. I think there's, there's some space along here. It gets a little tight in this area, but I think that's certainly something we can provide further analysis on to see how much of that berm we can provide to the greatest extent possible along these, you know, it's called immediately adjacent to those buildings.
You're going to have enough topsoil to build them, so.
Yeah, you should. So the ordinance requires the twenty-five-foot buffering and and the berm with the fence?
There's two different sections that apply here. One is just in general buffering from a commercial use to a residential use.
Right.
That's the twenty-five-foot buffer with the varied plantings. Then there's a second requirement for buffering parking areas abutting or joining residential properties.
Okay.
And that's the one that has the berm and the fence.
Right.
So in effect, you're going to have two buffers or somewhat of a combined buffer in that area.
The berm's going to help more with headlights?
Yeah, I think that was, that was part of the idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say if you can figure out how to get Yeah, I would say if you can figure out how to get something in there, see what you can figure out. I want this, I want these to see these properties as protected as, as much as possible.
Okay, so just to clarify, maybe the intent is to maybe a partial waiver upon, you know, if we can take another look at this and see how far we can provide that berm. Um, standing, then maybe it's a partial waiver to not provide it along X feet, depending on, you know, what that makes sense. I do want to also point out that as far as the current grading we have, if you look here, the parking lot is down at three ninety-six. And then, you know, this, these two houses here are up at probably four oh six. So, you know, essentially any headlights would be in, you know, this hillside ultimately we're grading due to that.
And just to clarify, our intent there was it wasn't to eliminate the requirement, but to seek a higher fence versus the berm and the fence where we've got a grade that goes essentially straight up, where the berm accommodating that grading and the landscape planning didn't make a whole lot of sense. So we tried to go with a higher fence in lieu of that. So maybe it's somewhat of a hybrid as we study that a little bit further where the site starts to come downhill.
Right. All right, yeah, see what you can come up with. I, I, I wasn't in full understanding of the, of the, the grade difference between the parking area and the, and the residential homes. So yeah, see, see if you can do something.
Perfect. All right, perfect. So then the next waiver request we have here, Jay, is ultimately was discussed prior regarding the required parking lot shading. To be clear, we're proposing less than the required thirty-five percent. Ultimately needing, their code requires to shade thirty-five percent of your parking lot with, you know, the canopies of your trees ultimately. And the, the reason why we're asking for it is because ultimately, we can't really feasibly do that with the, you know, required width of our truck courts. So we're ultimately requesting that waiver. And then I believe the comment was to potentially look at maybe potentially providing the trees along the access roads in lieu of providing that shading along the, the truck court ultimately.
Yeah, that was my suggestion. I don't think you'll, you know, you're not going to get the equivalent number of trees, but I think we'd want you to do the calculations for shading to determine, you know, what is that number of trees that would be required? You know, but however many you could put in some alternate locations on the property might, you know, offset that, that number.
But, I mean, is, is there shading, shading provided along the, the perimeter of the, of the paved area?
Out, out front, there's more. In the rear, it's hard because it's retaining walls along the.
Oh, right, right, okay.
Yeah, correct.
I think on that northern side, they have some opportunity to do more landscaping along the drives. I'm sorry, the southern side.
I mean, the, the purpose of the shading is to eliminate the, you know, the heat rising from the parking area, correct?
Yeah.
Help mitigate that?
Yes.
So anywhere that you can get it, at least on the perimeter, would, would be beneficial. Understand, you can't have, you're not going to be able to get islands in there with shading with your truck traffic. Anywhere that you could get on the perimeter would be beneficial. If at all possible.
Steve, where is the spray irrigation storage? Is that one of the basins?
I'm not sure. That's one of my stormwater comments that we didn't go over. I wasn't clear on the whole this irrigation design.
Sure, yeah, I can elaborate if you don't mind. Ultimately, and acknowledge we need to submit the spray irrigation design plans, but our design contemplates utilizing this basin and this basin to store that spray volume, which will subsequently be pumped into the spray irrigation fields, which are ultimately essentially the majority of the impervious areas.
Yes, my only other thought was if you could do some plantings around the basins to keep that water cooler.
Oh, there is a good amount of planting around the basins.
Right.
You know, now they've, they've more or less shown like a lot of people do just right on the perimeter. You know, you might want to look at some, just staggered plantings more, bring some, you know, wet tolerant plantings closer to the bottom of the basin and make it look a little more integrated than just having a row of trees around the outside.
Sure. Let me take a look at that.
All right, so getting back to Jay, you're going to, you're going to look to place trees in various locations in lieu of shading reduction?
Well, just along, I don't think they'll ever get to the full number, but.
No, I, I agree.
It would reduce what the waiver is asking for. And we've done waivers for that in the past. Generally, we've asked for a contribution in lieu of whatever the shortfall was.
Right. You guys accepting to that?
Yes, sir.
All right, why don't we move on to K?
Perfect. Lastly, waiver request we have here is in relation to the, the forestation, afforestation requirements. Ultimately, what we're proposing is a, to permit less than a required amount of trees and see if the township's willing to accept in lieu of that request, that requirement that were subsequently in deficient of.
And this, Chris, just to, for everybody's clarity, that's the standard that we have, that twenty percent of the site should be forested. And if it's not, you need to install plantings. I think before we have a total picture on this, we need to, or they need to go back and clear up those woodland area calculations and delineations on the plan.
Right.
Uh, so we have a better handle on what counts as woods, what doesn't, and where does that fall with the percentage left on the property?
Okay. Then that's all right with the, you folks and Veris?
Yeah, so we've got some work to do on that.
Okay. All right. So that was all of your waiver requests. Is there any other discussion we need to have tonight?
Not from our perspective, I don't think so. We wanted to make sure we touched on each of the items in the letter. We don't yet have the McMahon letter, but I think we're, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you all or anybody else on the call has.
Okay. Uh, well, first off, any, any comments or questions from the planning commission members?
This, this is Andy. I have several. Chris?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
I guess first, I mean, this is a big building. You know, we had pointed, we said earlier, a lot of McCadham, a lot of Blacktop. As far as the impervious, Steve, are, are we, is that fully compliant? Are we close on that? Is that, you know, is that an issue at all?
It's, it's just under the, the maximum permitted and that's the reason that, the question of if they expand the parking spaces, will that bring it up to, you know, to the maximum or over the maximum? But at this point, no, it's compliant.
Okay. Second question, I see there's forty-six or forty-eight bay doors for this. Is, is that correct? Truck doors?
Just to clarify on that, that's what we're setting it up for, to possibly add, but day one, there would be eighteen.
I see. How many tenants, you know, do you envision in this building? What would be a, what would be a good number?
One and possibly two.
I see, okay. Um, how about any consideration or thought to, to noise associated with this? As far as trucks backing up, trucks idling, any, you know, any other comments related to noise? I didn't see anything related to noise in the, in the proposal.
No, but we specifically oriented this with keeping in mind to isolate that activity area towards the, what I'll call the planned west side of the building, towards the quarry side of the building. So that's, I won't say it's dug into a hole down there, but the building actually acts as a, as a good screen wall against the adjacent residential uses and commercial uses.
Right, yeah, that would be, that would be the spot for it. Okay, and then we'll, my only other comment, I was just thinking, I don't know, school bus traffic and such, I think, I don't know if Meeting House is the artery that the school buses travel to go to South or the high school or whatever. That'll all come back in the traffic study, I'm sure. I'm, I was just trying to think of the travel that's going on, you know, around this facility, that's all. So we'll wait, we'll, we'll see what the traffic study comes back with. All right, those were my only questions and comments, Chris. Thank you.
You got it. Anyone else from planning commission?
This is John. My, my only question is, do you have an estimate for how many people will be working here on a daily basis?
Uh, we do have an estimate. I don't have it in front of me, Adam, but is it one per?
So if you're referring to ultimately what we're looking at.
Trying to do my, yeah.
The one per thousand square feet, Ryan, is a rule of thumb?
One per thousand square feet. If there's an accessory office area, we might have, you know, four per thousand in a small office area that supports this, but.
So let's call it.
One, one, one per thousand is actually pretty intense. I mean, usually we'd see one per two thousand or one per three thousand for the, for the warehouse area and then an accessory.
One per three thousand.
You know, for.
Ryan, one per three thousand.
Well, at that rate, then we're, there's not enough parking on the property.
How many shifts? It's multiple shifts, right, anticipated?
Right.
All right, that's based on multiple shifts, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, can you hang on one second, please?
Sure.
Let me, let me get through the planning commission members and then I'll load it up to.
Maybe with the revised plan, Veris should submit a little narrative that talks about, you know, how the number of employees, the number of shifts and, and just so we have an outline that, you know, shows that it's still within the parking nets.
And I apologize, I, I believe I do have that in the narrative. That's what I was trying to pull up.
I know there's some general discussion. I'm not sure if it talked to specific numbers.
John, do you have any other questions?
No, I don't, Chris. Thank you.
All right, Alex, you have anything?
I have none.
All right. Yeah, I'm pretty well done. Do you have any other facilities in the area? That, similar to this?
Um, I do have one, actually in my own hometown that I can, that I can show you some information on as well.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's the use there?
Uh, one side of the building does appliance delivery for Lowe's and then the other side does eye glass delivery, mail order eye glass delivery.
And it's this large of a facility?
Yes.
Wow. It's a lot of glasses.
It is.
Okay, wow, okay. Um, Steve, do you have anything else to add before I open this up?
No.
All right, well, then I'm going to open this up to public comment and question. Um, if you want to, if you want to ask a question, hit the, hit the hand icon on the bottom. Or send an email or just.
You have a waterproof pad as first?
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. So name an address, please.
Uh, twenty-nine sixty Climber Avenue.
And what is your name?
Patrick DeSantis.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm just a little curious, what, there was some things you guys brought up about the three drainage cauldrons on Climber Avenue. What were, what were, what was the association with those drainage cauldrons and what you guys are currently planning?
Sure, I can kind of give some description. So ultimately, if everyone can, trying to zoom in here, if everyone can see, but ultimately, there's three, it's called culverts under Climber Avenue. One is in this portion, this location here. One, this is second in this location here, a bit adjacent to our basin. The third is in this location here. Ultimately, what we are proposing to do is ultimately really not modify those in any way. Ultimately, our stormwater design contemplates studying those culverts and ultimately what's currently going to them. And then our stormwater design subsequently reduces the rate reaching those culverts. We're not proposing to improve them in any manner. We're actually proposing to reduce the rate of stormwater flow to them as a result of our stormwater design.
Where does the water go once it gets into those?
Sure, so ultimately, once it gets into these culverts, it discharges. This culvert here, let's call it the planned north culvert, discharges to a existing drainage ditch, which subsequently discharges to the creek located approximately in this location. This culvert here towards the south, or I apologize, the west, where our western basin discharges to ultimately connects into an existing storm sewer system across the street, which subsequently discharges into the same ditch across the street.
So, so have, has anybody looking at all the extra water that you guys are going to dump onto my property and the erosion effects and studies or anything? Is anybody looking out for me over here? Because it just looks like you're interested in, you know, doing your project and it doesn't really matter, you know, with this excess water where, you know, it's going. And this is a big issue in this area. You guys are just interested in putting up the building, I understand. But the residents around here, including the, um, uh, storage facility down there, we all and, and some of the board members even brought up the flooding nature of this area, especially not, no help to the wetlands that are naturally here that you're trying to mow over also. So I don't think the stormwater management plan's a very good one. And nobody talked to me about anything about dumping water onto my property. I know if I lived in town, you guys would have a fit if I dumped my gutter water onto somebody's property or too close to it. They're running it right onto my land.
Well, I'll, I'll say from, from the township aspects, we've asked for a lot more clarification about their stormwater management system and one of our concerns is that flow off of the property. So that, our, our review of their stormwater design is not, not complete at this point. And we'll certainly take extra effort to look at the culverts that discharge on, onto the opposite side of Climber Avenue.
Well, if they could keep it on their own property, that's how it would work out best because when we're in town, that's how it works out. I got to keep my water on my property as much as possible. I just want to leave that as a comment. The other things I want to make comments are the, you guys brought up about the trucks on the south side of the building. Um, I, I, I appreciate it that you're looking out for the consideration of trucks idling and stuff for people, but I don't think you're taking into consideration that all that noise is going to echo off the back of the building and everyone down Climber Avenue here, you know, we're going to have to listen to it all night long, twenty-four hours a day. Not to mention the lights on the backside of the building are going to be very high and we're, they're going to be taller than the trees for a long time. So I don't see how you're going to keep the lights out of my windows and stuff like that all night long. And.
Mr. Chairman, it's been two and a half minutes.
Okay, I did forget to mention, you're limited to two and a half minutes worth of comment or question. So. of comment or question. So finish your own, make it brief.
That's pretty much it. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that I have a concern about the noise. And I don't think that they're doing anything to look out for that. The lights, same thing. And the drainage is the huge, big one here. They're just trying to dump on me and, you know, nobody bothered knocking on my door, talking to me. So I don't like the idea. That hillside already washes out. The tree's falling down, people get, you know, they're down here trimming the trees all the darn time, you know? So I just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Next person is the Vogels.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yes, hello, Brian Vogel, owner of Rock Hill Mini Storage and Rock Hill Contractor Services. Uh, two quick ones, and elaborates on the waterproof gentleman there. Obviously, we're on the south side there and the retention basin, that is our big concern on that side. Uh, two questions about that. So, uh, when our father built our facility, we saw, he, they engineered the retention basin here. We've seen that fill up. So if that one fills up, will there be an overspill? And obviously, we'll know where that overspill will go. The number two is spray irrigation. How is that handled during the winter months?
Sure, a good question. And, and just referring to this property here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sure. So let me pull up our grading plan. So ultimately, our stormwater basin contemplates, this basin specifically, contemplates storage for spray irrigation. And just to elaborate on spray irrigation, ultimately, there's, let's call it spray, spray heads spread throughout the property, which ultimately fed through what water is pounded here through a pump system. So essentially, think of it like, very similar to like, spray heads on a golf course. Ultimately, is actually what they end up ordering, very similar to that, with, you know, lines dispersing that throughout some spray heads. And then those, that system is designed to discharge that water at a certain rate to ultimately, you know, in essence, you know, mimic rainfall essentially is the general ten as opposed to, you know, concentrating all the infiltration in one small basin. So that's essentially the spray irrigation system.
During Jan, during January and February?
So, good question. So during the winter months, what is currently proposed is that these pumps are actually turned off and then there's a orifice within the outlet control structure, which is subsequently opened. I believe it's on the order of an inch, I think it's about two to three inches currently, to slowly drain that basin then at that point.
Into the Mill Creek?
Into the downstream discharge, which is ultimately, we are proposing to connect to this existing inlet at the culvert, at this unnamed tributary here.
Right, yeah, that's the one that we installed ourselves personally, so.
Adam, if I might, might interrupt here. Did I read that, that winter discharge from the basin is, is delayed for 24 hours after the storm before it is released out of the basin?
So in the winter discharge, it's ultimately an orifice that's open as part of the maintenance aspect of the basin. So in the operating months, the orifice is closed, the storage for spray is sprayed, and then ultimately in the winter operations, this orifice clears at the bottom of the outlet control structure, it's open and that water slowly discharges then.
Okay, I misunderstood that a little bit.
Adam or Steve, could I ask at a high level, can you speak to what your ordinance requirement is, as it relates to post-development rate versus pre-development rate? That may speak to some of these concerns as well. In other words, the design has to accommodate a lower post-development discharge rate from the site than it is today. Is that accurate?
Generally, yes. I just, I was hesitating because I didn't want to quote numbers because I have so many different districts, I can't remember them all without looking.
No, and I'm just, I, I didn't want to speak to numbers, but I just want to clarify at a high level that there is a requirement that has to be approved here on reducing those rates at both outlets, both to the north and to, and to the south and east.
Oh, certainly. And, I mean, Mr. Vogel's well aware of that because they've done development and they've had to meet those standards on their property. And, and, you know, I understand what his concern is because we've dealt with his issues, those concerns, you know, over the years. I, as I said earlier, there's a lot of, you know, additional information we have asked for, for the stormwater system. We'll continue to monitor how that ultimately impacts any of the offsite properties.
All right, Brian, you satisfied with your answers? Yes, thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else, Greg?
Next is Jeff Nolan, 3000 Climber Avenue, if he wants to speak, or does he want me to read the emails? I will read his emails.
Go ahead and read his email.
Uh, can't move forward without a traffic study. Will there be signs at each entrance? And Meeting House Road will have to be widened and possibly Climber. Meeting House is definitely too narrow. It's too tight for two pickup trucks, let alone two tractor trailers. There has to be roadwork for sure. Next, I have Hal Shermer.
Uh, yes, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Hal Shermer, 1805 Ridge Road. Very interesting project and we have to balance a lot of things. First thing that comes to mind is that this property is actually located directly on top of what's known as the Greaterford member of the Lakatong Shale, which is a really hard piece of shale that can be traced about 20, 30 miles in either direction. So I'm a bit concerned about the idea and possibility of infiltration, very similar to what our Percival City Borough Authority ran into while trying, trying to put sewer in on Ridge Road and found out that, yeah, the black shale is a lot harder to build in than most people initially expected. I did want to question whether or not there's any possibility for either a green roof or some kind of white roof for radiation. Make sure the plantings are heavy on willows so that they actually will transpire and get some of the water out of there. Might it be possible to see about getting some spray irrigation or fountains in the ponds in order to create some white noise to bed in things? And if you, and if Adam goes back, I think one or two or three images, there actually is a interest in park and rec because that bottom little corner is actually the outfield line for Drager's baseball field. So at some point, you guys may end up playing there. Uh, thank you and goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Shermer.
Next you have Stephen Kratz.
Hi, um, this is Amy and Steve Kratz, 3270 Meeting House Road. Um, we have the following comment. Um, we are opposed to the proposed land development. We understand this part of the township is zoned, planned industrial, private residences and small businesses round out this community. The currently established businesses are friends and neighbors, and they operate during regular business hours, not a problem for local residents. This developer, however, anticipates potential 24/7 operations. A constant stream of traffic and noise is a problem. The intent is to develop the building on a speculative basis. Future tenants present unknown impacts to our local community. People also choose to live and raise families here. All township residents have a right to live here and enjoy their properties. The developer says that its plan was designed to effectively screen and buffer the operations of the site from those around it. The only lax ass lanes, however, flank our home and our neighbors. The developer also seeks waivers to provide less than the required berm and fencing between its property and these meeting house homes. In addition, it's requested waivers from four township requirements to permit less landscaping and less than the required amount of trees. This building is too big for this site. Its anticipated operations are not suited for its surroundings. Proposed land development of this scale affects a lot of people, private properties, and the quality of life of township residents. And we don't think that's right. Approving a building of this size and description will set a precedent, encouraging realtors and developers to seek more land in the township to develop in similar ways. Is a 185,000 plus square foot building like this operating 24/7 what the township wants for its community now and in the future? We understand there are representatives here from the Board of Directors in addition to the Planning Commission. We hope our local government representatives can understand our resident perspective and concerns. We encourage you to vote against approving this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Next, you have Cliff Cole.
Hi, my name's Cliff Cole. I'm on 2440 Shoe Craft Road. I'm also a, I represent a group called the Citizens for Clean Air. We are opposed to the Adelphia Gateway Quakertown Compressor Project, which is on the other side of the township. We stand in solidarity with our West Rock Hill, fellow West Rock Hill residents that are in this area down on Climber Road and, I'm sorry, I forget the name of the road that the trucks are gonna go out onto. You, you mentioned buffering in here. It seems like it's a joke. How are you buffering any of the residents from a big monstrosity like this warehouse? I, I agree with the previous commenter that this is just way too big and does not fit in with West Rock Hill Township's plan. Where is this, where is a warehouse like this mentioned in the five-year plan that was commissioned by the Bucks County, you know, that the Bucks County did for the West Rock Hill? Where, where is, where does something like this mentioned? A 24/7 operation with truckers coming in? We already know what that's like because we're dealing with that up at the compressor site right now, where they're doing the construction. We don't even get a 24/7, but we get trucks, we get cement mixers that, that fall into, you know, that, that are, go off the road and nearly capsize and just irresponsible construction. I, you know, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And who really benefits from this? Who really does, does our township really benefit from having something like this? And, you know, one of the Planning Commission members mentioned, well, we really do want to protect the, the neighbors around here. Well, if you want to protect the neighbors, vote against having a, a big project like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, I have someone, Waterproof Pat. I don't know if they already went before.
I did. I just want to follow up with, uh, tell Mrs. Kratz, Bravo, Jeff, Bravo, Mr. Vogel, Bravo. And I think you're gonna get a lot of nays on this one. I'm gonna follow in with that. We don't want the warehouse. It's just too big for this area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Is Jeff, has his hand up? Just Jeff?
Yeah, this is Jeff Nolan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, 3000 Climber Avenue. I had sent the emails, I don't know what was wrong with my audio earlier, but I just wanted to second all of the surrounding neighbors. I don't think any of us want such a development to go into our, kind of rural back neighborhood of West Rock Hill Township. You know, we like the quiet, we like the calm, we like our area. So my vote is absolute no as well.
Okay, thank you.
And you have one more that's unknown? I don't know who that person is.
Sorry, it's Christine Shelley, 50, Weyland Road. I don't know, I'm having trouble with my technology tonight, sorry about that. I also would like to echo my neighbors' protestations against this project. I hear a lot of talk about waivers and when, when, we don't have all the information. And it, it just, I just think that these projects there, that are trying to be pushed in are just too big for our small rural community, that we do not get benefit from these projects. And yet we have to reap all of the consequences when these businesses try to push into our communities. So I just want to say that I also am against this project. So thank you very much for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment I see.
All right. Well, if there's no more comment, I guess we will move to table this. Do we need to table this? Make it official, a tabling? Sure. All right. Somebody want to make a motion to table the plan?
I motion to table the plans until we get some responses back.
Can I get a second?
Just John, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, so see what you come back with.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, give me a second to regroup. So next on the agenda is THP Investments. Bob, you want to take the reins here?
Sure. Um, I don't know how much of a recap you would like us to do. I think most of you have seen this plan a number of times.
Yeah, keep it brief and let's hit the things that we were having issues with.
Okay, yeah, last time, there were a couple of, vast majority of the items in the review letters are simply will complies. There's a couple of waiver requests. But Steve's letter, if I will go number by number, item eight had to do with the recreation area. We had originally requested that that be deferred until the Homeowners Association was in a position to make that decision. I think the direction we got last meeting was that you wanted to see something either now or there was discussion of a fee in lieu of. If you could give us some direction on that, either we will be proposing in that recreation area that's shown in the plan, shuffleboard courts, bocce ball courts, or similar age-remated activities. We'll be proposing those unless the, the commission has, would prefer a fee in lieu of.
Well, it's a great question. Um, I, I'm not opposed to, to seeing those facilities going in. I wonder what anyone else's thoughts are?
Letting the residents have more of a say in it, but I think we, my thinking was we needed to have something proposed and maybe the money for that escrow. And then if they decided they wanted a putting green instead of a bocce court, I'd have no problems with them altering that, that proposal. Just have something so we knew how much should be put in that escrow.
Yeah, I, I'd agree. I have fee in lieu of written in my notes too, but I, I agree with Alex that I think the intent was more of a, of an escrow than a, than a fee in lieu of.
Right.
Just to ensure that something was constructed.
Yeah, okay, we agree to do that. Uh, next one would be item 16A. 15 talks about waivers. Did you want to come back to the waivers after we get through the discussion items?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. Uh, 16A, um, yes, Steve was looking for a vehicle tracking between the units 48 and 49. We did run a vehicle tracking. I did get that over to Steve late, but that, the, the. I did get that over to Steve late, but that, the standard fire truck can easily negotiate that path between units forty-eight and forty-nine. Sixteen B had to do with the spacing between the curb and the sidewalk. We are now proposing the standard township detail and will provide a depressed curb across the entire, each entire cluster so that you don't get the up and down of a sidewalk. There'll be a five-foot long, I wouldn't even call it a ramp, but it, it gone from a standard sidewalk down to a depressed sidewalk across each cluster. So that, again, if you're riding, kids riding a bike or pushing a stroller, you don't go up and down. But, and bottom line is, we're going to comply with the standard township detail on that.
And that's your, the, you have a detailed drawing.
Yeah, one of the drawings on this PDF will show that. Can you slide that over, Greg? All right, keep going. There you go. Yeah, this, this drawing shows a profile through the sidewalk across the front of a cluster. And you can see at either end, there's a five-foot, I call it a ramp, I believe. It does not exceed a twelve-to-one slope.
I, I'm generally okay with what they're proposing. We'll work out the final details.
All right. Yeah, I know that's what we had talked about last time.
Okay, sixteen D, traffic calming. Greg, if you go down, two more pictures. It would be the, be the last, last drawing on the PDF. There you go. That's it. Yeah, we're proposing a stamped asphalt, which is somewhat of a rumble surface to act as, as traffic calming. Now, we had looked into, to traffic humps, but that was going to be problematic for a couple of reasons. The locations of adjoining driveways, it was going to be potential issues with the storm drainage. But these stamped concretes, it's a visual as well as a a rough surface to act as a traffic calming device.
Are these going to be at your crosswalks?
Yeah, they'll be at each of the crosswalks.
These are stamped asphalt, not concrete, correct, Bob?
Yeah, stamped asphalt, correct.
Right.
And.
And you're gonna, you're gonna paint them a different color than the asphalt?
Yeah, they colorize them.
Right.
Yeah, it's a polymer pavement that they put down, made mill out and put down an inch or so of that colorized pavement, pavement, so it's not painted. We did these in, for life of me now, I can't remember the name, but it was Garrus's Townhouse Development off of Climber, just up through the railroad tracks.
Providence?
No, no, on the other side of the street.
Yeah, Wood Spring.
Wood Spring.
Wood Spring. That's right. Bob, you were involved with that, weren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, they have these patterned crosswalks in, in that development if anybody wanted to see what they look like.
How are they holding up, Steve?
Uh, I haven't been in there for a while, but I know of other ones in low traffic areas like these streets, they hold up pretty good. If you've ever seen the one that they did in the center of Sellersville, you'll see that it's, the traffic is worn right through the colorized asphalt. So they're not great on high-volume streets, but in a development like this, they're perfect.
Okay.
All right.
So it's just going to give you a little rumble when you drive across it and remind you that you're supposed to be doing fifteen mile an hour?
That's the idea.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Next one, seventeen. The, the question last time had to do with site distance across the Chung property. And, and Dean had tried several times to get some kind of an agreement with neighboring property and, and they, they just were not interested. We made a couple of suggestions and provided them to McMahon, who wrote a review letter dated January twenty-fourth. I'll read through it in case you don't have a copy of it. But it says, based on a review of the information provided by the applicant for the intersection of Farmer's Lane and Hidden Meadows Drive, the following pavement markings and signs should be added to the intersection to improve the existing site distance. First one is provide double yellow line and solid white line pavement markings on Farmer's Lane beginning at Lawn Avenue and ending approximately two hundred fifty feet to the south of Hidden Meadows Drive. A travel lane marking should create eleven-foot wide travel lanes on Farmer's Lane. Next one is add a dash line, a dash white line marking on Farmer's Lane across the Hidden Meadows Drive approach to the intersection. Add a side road warning sign should be placed in the northbound approach of Farmer's Lane. Add a double yellow line on Hidden Meadows Drive extending approximately fifty feet back from Farmer's Lane. And replace the existing stop, stop sign and provide a twenty-four inch wide stop bar on Hidden Meadows Drive. They also had a couple of suggestions back at the other entrances to the project. And we are in agreement with all of those and they'll be depicted on the future plans. Last item had to do with the driveway separation from the intersections. Greg, can you pull up a couple? Keep going right there. No, keep going. There we go. Okay, what we did, this driveway for lot number one was about thirty feet from the intersection last time we spoke. And by flipping the throat of the driveway so that the, that the driveway is closer to the adjoining unit and sliding the clusters of one to six and seven to nine, about fifteen feet closer to units ten and eleven, we were able to increase that distance to forty-eight feet. Sixty feet is what's required by ordinance, so we will still be requesting a waiver. But as you can see, it's significantly larger than last time we spoke.
And it, it was thirty the last time?
I believe it was thirty feet last time.
They gained eighteen feet?
Yes.
And that is coming in off of Hidden Meadows Drive?
Drive, correct.
Yeah. All right. So is that all the things that we had issues with?
They were the main issues, unless there was any others that you had concerns about.
I honestly don't remember. The ones that you, you hit, I did remember, but I don't know of any.
Those are the ones I had listed as to be resolved.
Right. Um, so what are you looking for tonight?
And we would appreciate a preliminary recommendation.
A preliminary, not final?
If you'd like a preliminary final, that'd be even better.
I'm sure. No. I think we're ready for that. Any comments from Planning Commission members?
This is Alex. I was just looking at, at fifteen miles an hour, that boils down to about twenty-two feet per second, which gives you about two seconds after turning in Farmer's Lane before you get to that first driveway, which, I mean, even if it was sixty feet, I guess that would be three seconds. It, it does seem like it's very close to that driveway of somewhere to be backing out as someone was turning in there.
Neil? What's the, what's the speed limit on Hidden Meadows?
I don't believe it's posted. But I would suspect it would be twenty-five if it would be posted.
Yeah, I don't, as a private road, I don't think we, we required it to be posted when that was done.
Right. Huh, that would be thirty-six and a half feet a second.
All right, well, let's circle back to that. Was there any other issues? Any other comments? All right, I guess we're going to circle back right away. Um, I mean, what's the rest of the Planning Commission's thoughts on this, on this distance from the corner?
This is John. I, I, I agree with Alex's comment is it's, that, that's not a lot of time for someone to react making a turn. And again, this is a community of older people and speaking on behalf of older people, our reaction times tend to be a little bit less than younger people. And I think that's a potential problem.
Okay. Andy?
I would tend to agree with, with that, you know, overall, I think, you know, we've, you know, come far on, on, you know, making the changes and, you know, the, and suggestions between the plans. I guess we're okay with the, you know, with, with McMahon's study. Uh, you know, that was a big thing that stuck out to me from the last meeting was having it, you know, go back to them and see what their assessment was. So, so long as we're okay with that. Yeah, but I, the, 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 the space here for backing up on lot one, I, I could, I could see it happening. I don't have any additional comments, you know, beyond that.
I, I could say that McMahon did look at the internal system of the site. I don't know that they looked at that specific driveway, but they did not comment on it. I don't know if that means they did not take objection to it or they didn't notice it.
Right.
But I mean, as a preliminary plan, if that's, you know, something that you want to get resolved with McMahon before final, that's an option too.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm uncomfortable with it, I, as, like the rest of the members. I mean, if McMahon can, can tell us like, yeah, that's, that's, you're making a big issue out of something that's not an issue, then, then I'd be all right with that. But, you know, the gut feeling is that's, it's got some, some danger. It's got a dangerous aspect to it.
Like I said, I'm no traffic expert, just looking at the numbers. And like you said, I'm not sure the difference between two seconds and three seconds is huge either, but it, it just jumped out at me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Bob, can you have, have McMahon look at that? Or do you know if they did look at that?
Well, I. Yeah, I don't know if they did look at that. But again, I mean, we're okay with Steve's suggestion. If you want to recommend a preliminary approval and one of the condition is, is to have the McMahon review this waiver. We're okay with that.
All right. So we're, we're pretty well cleaned up aside from this and, you know, if that's the, if that's the hanger, we get it cleaned up. Yeah. Can we, how do we, how do we go about this one? Recommend preliminary, depending on the, the traffic study on that corner there.
Right. I mean, there's, there's still the conditions, you know, in my letter and you would probably want to reference, uh, you know, the other items is discussed at your December meeting, which would, you know, you could refer to the minutes for the December meeting.
Right. All right. Somebody want to put that into a motion?
This is, this is Andy. I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary plan approval pending or cleanup of the items from the December meeting as well as review of, traffic study review of the driveway of lot one.
Yeah. And the engineering letter? Andy?
Say that again, please.
You say, and the engineering letter?
And, and the engineering letter.
Thank you. There we go.
Thank you, sir.
Um, can I get a second?
This is Alex. I'll second that.
All right.
Chris, you do have public comment. Alex raised his hand.
Who raised his hand?
How?
So.
Before you take action, you have to take public comment.
Okay. I know we had, we can have a discussion. I didn't know we can take public comment. All right, go ahead, Alex.
Any vote?
Oh, good evening, guys. I was just curious because I had looked over the, the plans. Have there been any clarifications on having two fire entrances into the project?
Yes. Yes, there, yeah, I can take this one. Yeah, there, there are. There's, actually, there's three. There's two main entrances off of Hidden Meadows Drive. And then there's also, and there's also an emergency access to an existing drive that will take you out to Lawn Avenue.
Okay. I was, I was kind of curious because I was looking through the real estate database and noticed that there's one little open area on Harvest Hill Drive south of Hidden Meadows. So I was just, you know, figuring eventually, hopefully that, you know, I assume that that'll get developed and brought into this. So that would give you three or four different entrances off of Farmer's Lane and Lawn Avenue. Redundancy is always good when you're trying to get fire trucks in for that. So just remember seeing that, but didn't hear anything about the continuation of the northern access, which had been the precision finishing driveway. Is that still in play?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a second. We're done discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Soon as I get to the button, aye.
Opposed?
This is John. I still remain opposed due to the issue of the non-compliant cul-de-sac.
Understood. All right, well, motion carries. So I guess we'll wait to hear back from you, Bob.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
You got it. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Greg, does this automatically go to the supervisors then?
Uh, Steve?
Has the agenda been set already, Greg? Would this have to go to next one?
Uh, the agenda hasn't been set yet.
Then I suppose they could be added.
There you go.
Send us an email that confirms you want to be on the agenda tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
By tomorrow, send us an email that you want to be on the agenda. Otherwise, it will be set and you will be out.
Okay.
It's scheduled on Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday is the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but we said it, tried to set it the Wednesday before.
Got it. Okay, we'll get something over to you tomorrow. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right. I lost my agenda. Well, too many papers. So anyway, next on the agenda was a discussion of cul-de-sac. And then we also have discussion on the comp plant items. And we're two hours in already. This is something that if we want to continue, we can. If not, we can table those discussions until another meeting. Uh, so what? Uh, so what is anyone's pleasure?
This is John, I propose we table them.
This is Alex, I was thinking, um, John had a list of, uh, comprehensive plan initiatives, and it looked like from the email, you were just gonna kind of introduce us to them at this point, John?
Actually, my, my thinking was that I made a recommendation for which group to have the lead on each item, either being this group, the Park and Rec group, or the Conservation Committee. And what I would be asking for is just a nod from this group that you're okay with my recommendations. And then I would take the, those lists to the other two groups to get their concurrence for which group would have the lead on which item.
Having looked over them, I'm perfectly fine with what you've had delegated for the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with Alex, sure.
That would make this discussion pretty simple, then.
Yeah.
That's why I figured we can get it knocked out and still keep the thing moving.
Okay, that, that's fair enough. Andy, any comment?
Uh, thanks, John. No, I'm, I'm fine with it, the, with the comp, with the items for planning commission, particularly eleven through fourteen, I'm certainly, uh, was very interesting to me. Uh, as far as the Park and Rec Committee, uh, the Farmer's Market, and I know the comp plan had spelled out that that was the supervisor's responsibility. I was wondering why you, you, uh, chose to delegate that to Parks and Rec. But besides that, everything else looked, looked, looked great to me.
Yeah, my, my thinking there was just, s- somebody was gonna have to be the arms and legs for it, and thinking that that again, that, to me, that seemed to fit better with, with the Park and Rec group versus the other two. Um, un- unless Greg Lipincott has, has any other suggestions along the way, I, I would think that most items would be come through one of the subcommittees first before going to the supervisors, rather than directly the supervisors to take specific action.
One thing that, uh, the Park and Rec is going to do a Farmer's Market once this year. They're doing it in May, I think it is.
Okay, yeah, I remember.
Park and Rec's doing one Farmer's Market this year.
Okay.
I also figured that's gonna be at James Park, which kind of puts it back at Park and Rec, too.
Yes.
True. Looks good, John, thank you.
You're welcome.
So John, are you looking for us to approve you taking these action items to the Park and Rec and Conservation Committee?
If you want to formalize it that way, that's fine.
Yeah, I have no problem with you doing that.
Okay.
Do we need any kind of motion, Greg, or is this just something that kind of goes on its own?
It's fine, it can just go on its own.
All right.
As long as there's no real opposition.
So John, you're gonna, you're gonna contact the, the various, uh, entities and set up a time to meet with them, or get on their
I'll work to get on their agendas for upcoming meetings and, and go through. I'll go through the items a little bit more detail there, since they're probably not as familiar with them as, as we are here, but I'll set up a discussion for those groups.
Just so you know, the Park and Rec is this Thursday night.
Hmm, okay. I might not have time between now and then to get ready, but I might, I have to work for the next meeting then.
Okay. Yeah, whatever you can do, appreciate it. All right. All right, do we want to have any more discussion on our action items, or you want to call it a night?
I'd say we could table it now.
Yeah, I would, I would second that.
All right, well, so you, you want to table the cul-de-sac discussion and the comp plan initiative discussion?
I'll, I'll make a comment on, on the cul-de-sac one. I,
Okay.
I put a lot of thought into this and, and trying to figure out, you know, I've been stubborn about it, and whether my stubbornness is justified or not. Um, I took a ride over, there's a new development going in, in Percacy. It's also a THP development. Uh, and it's twenty-three townhouses off of a cul-de-sac that doesn't seem to have any emergency escape route associated with it. So, and what, that's in East Rock Hill or Percacy, I'm not sure, but obviously it passed their planning commission. Um, so, and that's kind of goes back to a point that Steve made before, is that, you know, there wasn't as much science that went into establishing the numbers as maybe there have been for, for other audiences, so maybe it's a little bit more arbitrary and subjective than, um, than some of the other requirements. But my issue, my real issue was, the more I thought about it, is the importance of having rules to live by. Um, you kind of heard some of it before, and this is, this is what prompted me to say something tonight. Some of the other residents in objecting to the previous project that was discussed. I get concerned at times that we've created this culture of waiverism. And that you, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but sometimes it feels like we're a little bit more of a waiver club than the planning commission. If, if we looked at what the project would look like if that warehouse met all of the township requirements with no waivers, it would probably be about half the size as it is today. Number of parking spaces, berms, setbacks, all the things that we went through that we talked about waivers for, that just kept making the project bigger and bigger. And it gets to the point where it, it is not only disproportionate to the property itself, but it, it does have spillover impact on the residents of the community. And I know if Tim was here, he would be talking about property owners' rights. And I was thinking that, you know, at what point in time does person A's pursuit of happiness and prosperity then have a negative impact on property owner B's pursuit of happiness and, and prosperity? And in granting waivers on projects, you know, little by little, we're, we're giving away what's the valuable asset of the township to the developers coming in. I, I think of another event that's happened in recent months at the supervisors' meetings, where there's been a fellow that's complained that he's on a little road off of Upper Ridge Road, and he can't get, you know, he can't get his trash collected anymore. The trash companies are saying that is, his road is on a dangerous blind curve, and it's unsafe for the trash trucks to come in and out. And he made a comment at one of the meetings that, um, you know, it wasn't like this thirty-five years ago, you know, why do I have this problem today? And I was thinking, how many waivers were issued in the last thirty-five years that made that road that much busier than it was before? That now causes other problems? And as, as some of the other residents, you know, said before, you know, there's a lot of other activity that goes on in the community other than this one warehouse, that this one warehouse creates a lot of collateral impact to. A- and I think we contribute to that by, as I said, the, the culture of waiverism. I, I think going forward, what I would like to suggest that we think about is not being as enabling to the developers for waivers, but take a firmer hand that, you know, the developers meet the requirements as they're stated. And that our function is to ensure that they're compliant, provide them some guidance in order to help them be compliant. But at the same time, be the policeman of the rules to make sure that the rules are fair, they're equitable. And if they need to be changed, that there's a process for changing them so that they're fair and equitable across the board. Rather than this kind of just erosion of the standards that we have until, you know, our community starts to look like all the other suburban communities in Lower Bucks County that people don't want to live in anymore. You know, I, I think, just in my own case, you know, I, I've been here forty years, and it used to be rare where I'd have to wait for traffic to clear before I pull out of my driveway. And now it's rare that I don't have to wait for traffic to clear to pull out of my driveway. That doesn't affect me all that much. There's things that have a lot bigger impact on other people, but you know, each waiver has collateral impact to other residents in the community that in themselves, each one is so miniscule, but added up over a period of time, they just have that much more impact on the community as a whole. And, and I think that our role should be more in defenders of the community rather than enablers for the developers. So that's my long-winded brain dump on cul-de-sacs.
Okay, well, thank you, it was very insightful. I don't have a whole lot of comment to put on top of yours. Um, and I, when I first joined the planning commission, I, I, I basically had the same attitude until I saw how, how, uh, you know, the difference between the, the SADO and the, and zoning ordinances, um, worked and how they were dealt with. Um, you know, some waiver requests have, have no reason to be requested. Um, and I think some makes sense. I mean, I don't think we're here to, to quell or promote development. I think we're here to, to kind of regulate it. And you know, with the, with the waivers, obviously we are somewhat promoting development, which I don't know is, is such a horrible thing. If we're promoting, you know, irresponsible development, then yeah, then that's an issue, but I, I, I've never felt that we were doing that. And, you know, and then you also have the legal issues of things, because, you know, SADO uh, regulations are basically negotiable through, through wavering. Um, and, and that's, that's been the attitude that I've adopted with, with the whole situation. Going to cul-de-sacs, I mean, the, the, my biggest thing i- is with waivers is the biggest thing for me is safety. And the safety issues are, are ones that, that I tend to, you know, stand up against when, when there are waiver requests. And, you know, the cul-de-sac thing is, is a matter of safety in, in my opinion. Now, I don't, I don't know if you want to keep getting into the cul-de-sac discussion, or you want to, you know, if people want to chime in on this, the, uh, wavering discussion. Any other input?
This is Alex, I think we've got a lot to think about. I think maybe we can pick it up next time, and after we've digested John's thoughts of it.
I appreciate your thoughts, John, and I just want to add to you guys, you know, that drainage cauldron that we're talking about is mine. It, you know, Timmy put that in.
You need your name and address, so for the minutes.
Sorry, twenty-nine sixty Climber Avenue, Patrick.
Your name?
Patrick DeSantis.
Okay, thanks.
When I bought that place, you know, Timmy had paid for that drainage cauldron on my side of the street. The township put it in on the other side, you know, and hooked into my drainage cauldron. So, you know, the, 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 the fact that, you know, maybe this is being talked about and dumping all this extra water into my drainage cauldrons, and you know, the fact that, you know, I appreciate what John brought up about my land rights, because he's right. You know, the whole, the whole project just totally blew past the residents, and we're already where we're at now. You know, trying to waiver things, and, uh, unfortunately, um, you know, when, when, Chris, you're talking about the, the greater benefit of the community. Well, I mean, with this last storm, the last couple storms, the hurricanes, we've seen a tremendous amount of damage. And our community can't take any more water in these creeks. We can't keep doing this with this water runoff, it's getting too much. You know, so putting another big building in this like this, I do waterproofing for a living. When you get one inch of rain per acre of land, that's twenty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-eight gallons per inch per acre, it's just under thirty thousand gallons. They have several acres that they're trying to divert into three drainage cauldrons that divert into other areas that we're already having issues. I just don't think that this is being planned good enough, and it's being built right on top of wetlands, guys. I mean, it's not going to get any better for them. They can't keep the water on their property. They're gonna have to dish it out, and unfortunately, they have to go through all their neighbors to do that. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, a- any more comments? Wait till the end of the, of the meeting for the public comment section, please. Thank you. Um, so getting back to our cul-de-sac discussion, do, do we want to go any farther with this discussion, or do you want to table it till another meeting?
And focusing on, uh, thinking about John's comments between meetings.
I'm talked out.
You're talked out, all right. Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Sure.
John, I thank you for everything you've done, and I know you've done the comprehensive plan and everything. You've done a fabulous job, that's all I could say, and, um, you know, unfortunately, like, some people can't spend as much time researching and doing different things like you have done, but, you know, I, I do stand with you, if we have, um, rules and regs or specs, whatever, I understand that. Um, but, you know, you, you, you've done a lot of work, and I can thank you for that, that's all.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate that.
All right, so if we're gonna table this, somebody make a motion to table the
Does John and make a motion to table it?
Alex, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries. All right, next item is old business. Do we have any old business? I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Andy, no. Greg, is there anything we need to be? Or Steve?
Nothing.
Okay?
No, just as an information point, we, we did get a revised green top road subdivision plan, so that'll be on March's agenda.
That's Lapeo.
It's our Lapeo, correct.
Right, okay.
And we got a revised Tim Snyder plan.
Oh, sort of, yeah. Um, I, I have to figure out what that submission means, but he did send me an email of a revised layout.
And the plan's got dropped off today at the township.
Okay, I'm not sure if he wants to come back to the planning commission right away, or if he's just doing that.
He does, he told, he told me he wants to be on the March agenda.
Ah, then we have two things.
All righty now. All right, um, how about new business? I don't have any.
None for me.
Do we have a plan status? Did we get one of those?
Yeah, there's nothing.
Nothing to worry about?
No.
Okay. All right, public comment. Do we have anything, anyone else?
Cliff Cole has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Cliff.
Yeah, I'll make a quick, I know you all want to go home. Wait, wait, we're over.
We are home. We just want to go to bed.
All right, um, anyways, I would really like to thank John for his comments, they, uh, they really resonated with me. Um, and I, I have to say that one thing in his comment, and, and, uh, Chris is too, it, um, is this really, um, is this construction really necessary? And is, you know, is this really ethical? Is this really, you know, but, okay. Um, and I'm talking about the, uh, the, um, warehouse. And, um, I have another, uh, issue on the warehouse. It wasn't, this was owned by Drum Construction. Were they, was it not? That, that's, that was the previous owner, and didn't they have a DEP violation for, uh, underground tanks? Um, in there, has, has anybody in the, uh, planning commission researched that? Uh, you know, was this adequately, uh, checked for, uh, you know, um, for soil contamination? So, that's my, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Cliff, I think in response to that, they said they did do some studies on that, and I, I heard right, they were gonna get us a copy of that study.
Yeah, that's correct, Alex. They did a phase one and phase two environmental study.
And you're totally satisfied with that? I mean, in
We haven't seen it.
The store?
All right. Anyone else? Are you done, Cliff? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I am. I'm just saying, within the historical context, I mean, were they looking in the right place? That's, that's, you know, I just, I just have to wonder.
Yeah. Well, we'll wait till we see the reports. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing or seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
John, make the motion.
Andy, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Night, everyone.